That was the weakest we've ever done.
There you go.
Well, a hearty good afternoon to everybody and especially to the people of Sioux Falls that are watching the program today. This is a special city council meeting. Today is Thursday, July 31st, and we're certainly pleased to have everybody join us. We'll start today's meeting with a roll call of your city council.
Council members Anderson, Erickson, Erpenbach, Jameson, Karski, Kylie, Ralphing, Staggers.
Very good. We start our meetings here in the city of Sioux Falls with an invocation. I am incredibly pleased to introduce to all of you and to our city, for those of you who don't know Pastor Judy Shaw. She is making a difference in so many different ways in the city of Sioux Falls and the surrounding area. She is a senior pastor at Center of Life Church here in Sioux Falls, and I'd encourage all of you to visit that congregation and see all the good things that are happening there. We would ask Senior Pastor Judy to lead us in the invocation. We'd ask you to stand, and then after she has finished, we'll continue with our pledge of allegiance. Pastor Shaw, welcome.
Shall we bow our heads? Heavenly Father, we are always thankful for the privilege to invite your presence and your blessings upon these type of gatherings. Thank you for such an exciting day that we're living in. Thank you for exciting leadership. Thank you for this great city. We acknowledge that you're the ultimate source and supplier of all good things. We acknowledge that you're the one that gives us good health and strength. So today, we ask for your continued blessings upon our leadership, our mayor, his team, and this city. We thank you for the grace, the wisdom, the understanding, and the spirit of unity that will be exercised in this place today. Help us to execute every strategy, every concept, every construct that will advance our city and our county and our government to make this a greater place. You've blessed us with families, with good health and strength. We ask you to continue to do what you do, and that's to provide us with your grace and your protection. We submit these blessings to you in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple Sundays ago, the city of Sioux Falls captured the attention of America. Oh, wait a second. A couple of Sundays ago, the city of Sioux Falls captured the attention of the world. CNN happened to be in our town this winter, and they were here to evaluate what was making Sioux Falls tick. How are we doing the things that we were doing? Because CNN not only wanted to tell you the United States, they wanted to tell the world about the city of Sioux Falls. It was about a 10-minute piece. We had no idea what was going to be in it, but I think it captured the good things going on here very, very well. Sioux Falls, an unlikely boom town. Our city is growing rapidly. The estimated population is just announced yesterday as about 166,700 people that have chosen Sioux Falls to live, work, and indeed play. Our MSA population is just over 240,000 people right now and soon to be a quarter of a million strong. Our city's growing about 2,500 people a year. We've got construction numbers that are indeed booming. I don't know if this is going to be the record year for construction in our city, but I will assure you, it will at least be number two when it comes to construction numbers for the city of Sioux Falls. We're -- our multi-housing unit numbers are going through the roof. Right now, in 2014, we're at 613 different multi-housing units in comparison with our record-breaker last year of 561. Single-family units are down just a bit from our number of 412 last year. Right now, we're at 319, but construction is going boom. We've got new and expanded businesses everywhere in this town. Now, these are both new companies, as well as these are current businesses who have decided to expand, who've decided to grow, who've decided to hire, and it's incredibly diversified in terms of what these businesses represent. They represent manufacturing, technology, retail, office, you name it. Healthcare in Sioux Falls continues to grow. Financial services is back strong, and yes, of course, that foundation for Sioux Falls, agriculture, is producing big time. You know, companies like Alcon, they're a trailer manufacturer and interstate companies, a technology and engineering-based business. They are finding that in Sioux Falls, it's a great place to do business and a great place to add high-quality jobs to our economy. Just two examples. Alcon, 180 new jobs in their first three years of business in Sioux Falls. Interstate companies, 60 new technology-based jobs in just five years. We are adding quality jobs here in the city of Sioux Falls, and in fact, from 2009 through 2013, we've added 3,800 education and healthcare jobs in Sioux Falls. During that same time, over 2,500 professional and business services jobs, over 1,000 manufacturing jobs, and over 1,000 retail jobs. There are help-wanted signs everywhere in Sioux Falls. In fact, there are 2,000 job openings right now. Our unemployment rate is at 3.1%. It is less than half of what the national unemployment rate is at 6.3%, and yes, we're definitely beating the state unemployment rate as well, which is 3.6%. Not only are jobs available, but at the same time, wages are getting stronger and benefits are getting better. If you need a job, check out Sioux Falls, South Dakota, because we've got a good one waiting for you. Sales tax growth, that is fundamentally one of the things that makes this city hum. It is growing at a great pace. In fact, the 2013 total growth rate was at 7.7%. The 10-year average growth rate has been at around 5%. As mentioned on the CNN piece, our fiscal house is in order. How? You know, how do we show that? Well, let's just start with that big old fat piggy bank that we have. We have solid operating reserves in this town. In fact, we've added $4.7 million to our city's piggy bank since 2010. The total reserves that we have in this city right now are almost $46 million. We wouldn't even need another tax dollar to come in from the citizens of Sioux Falls, and we could still keep this city's government running for at least four months. Name another city where you could do that. The house is in order all across the board. We have strong utility financials. Our pension plans, that thing that every county and every city and every state around America is just struggling with, not in Sioux Falls. Our pension plans are strong and getting stronger. In fact, because of the city employees of this town, because they agreed to pension reform, we are going to save over $300 million to the taxpayers of Sioux Falls over the next 25 to 30 years. We've already had 101 new employees that used to serve the city's people. 101 new employees are now part of the South Dakota retirement system. These are well-funded plans with 87% of it totally funded already. We're very conservative here. We're very frugal here when it comes to these plans, and we're actually looking at even more conservative assumptions in the year to come, council. This record of success, this record of being conservative, this record of being frugal, is not only being recognized by CNN, even more important, it's being recognized by folks like Moody's. These are objective and these are unbiased folks that look at not only Sioux Falls, but cities and states all across America. They have given us one of the strongest ratings possible. We're right now at an AA2 rating. We were at AA3, and then we were moved to AA2 in 2010. This is about as high a rating as you could possibly get when you use sales tax revenue bonds as one of the methods to run your city. I love talking about debt when it comes to Sioux Falls. I love it, because I love to educate the people of this town just how strong we are in terms of our financial position when it comes to debt in the city of Sioux Falls. And it's nothing new. Our debt burden was incredibly well-managed way before I became mayor, and we're going to make sure that after I'm done being mayor, that that debt burden is still very, very manageable. It is the envy of most. And remember, the prior page. Remember that Moody's bond rating? That again is another thing that's reflective of just how strong the city is and just how well we do manage debt when it comes to the city of Sioux Falls. And one thing too that the people of Sioux Falls needs to understand is that could we pay off debt right now? You bet we could. We could pay off even more debt right now, but at the same time, it doesn't always make sense to do that. You know, so, I mean, let's just talk about that just a little bit. Some of these bonds, they cannot be prepaid, okay? But also, in the case of many of them, the rates are so low, it doesn't make sense to prepay them, and we can use this money to do other grand things for the people that we serve. Look at again, that per capita debt. There's a couple of communities that borrow less per capita than we do, but not many. And our commitment to you is that that debt, that outstanding debt, will continue to decline. We manage debt responsibly, and we're going to continue to do that. In fact, our goal is that in 2019, we're going to be at a comparable debt level to where we were in 2010, all the while making some of the most important, most critical, most long overdue investments in our city's history. And we're doing it without leaving undue burden on the future generations. What a concept. We only use debt in this town to finance very large projects that will serve those generations long after all of us are gone. The event center, wastewater and water infrastructure, fire stations, libraries, future borrowing, like parking, water wrecking, yes, storm drainage facilities. CNN did say, council, that local leaders are making stuff happen. Council, we are. We are. And we're not doing it alone, but there are good things that are happening in our town. Let's just go through a couple of them. Our event center is going to open on time and within budget. We're going to have an indoor aquatic center coming to a city near you. Oh, and we're paying for it with cash. We project the opening will be in the fall of 2016. These public-private partnerships that we've talked so much about over the last four years, it's a concept where everybody wins. And two of them are going to be opening up this fall. If you like indoor facilities when it's, when that winter cold is all around us, we're going to love these. We will have a place to skate, and we'll have a place to play tennis, no matter how cold it is outside. You haven't seen anything yet when it comes to our downtown or when it comes to Falls Park. In, council, in the budget, we would like you to consider spending an additional $5 million when it comes to Falls Park, an additional almost $5 million when it comes to Phase 3 of the River Greenway. We're going to keep investing in these neighborhoods and yes, tackle one of those challenges that we have, such as affordable housing. The picture you see up above is kind of a before and after shot with a rehabilitation project that happened on 11th Street. It was a core city investment that was important, but folks that require affordable housing and the support that maybe comes along with it, they just don't have to be confined to the core. Those good folks should be allowed to live elsewhere as well, and that includes on the outskirts of our town. Neighborhood parks are important to this council, they're important to me, and they're certainly important to you. And with the budget that I'm going to talk about next, it will, as CNN reported, continue to provide certainty to businesses and to families all around. Sioux Falls, we're listening to you. We've heard you. This council hears you. This mayor hears you. The 1,100-plus city employees hear you. We hear you loud and clear. Now, get ready for the budget that will reflect that. We are going to continue to keep this city safe. Of the 34 new positions that I'm going to talk about here in this budget, 20 of the 34 involve public safety. We're adding five new police officers to the 272 current police team that we already have. Since 2010, we've added 20 men and women to protect and serve and keep these people safe. We're going to add five more with the budget next year with your approval. We will continue to increase the presence in those core neighborhoods that you, you hear about and that we talk about so much. Pettigrew Heights, the Cathedral District, the All Saints Neighborhood, Augustana and USF campuses, the Whittier Neighborhood, for example. And yes, we're going to continue to work with agencies that help us meet these critical needs. The Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, the Safe Home, the Multicultural Center, and of course, the well-known banquet. Our police team will be strong, but also, our fire team will never have been stronger. As mentioned earlier, this city is growing. We are right now in the progress of opening up our next fire station, Fire Station Number 11. They don't come cheap. They don't. There will be 15 new fire personnel that will be associated with this facility. It'll cost about $1.2 million, council, in terms of operating expenses to ultimately run it, but it's needed. The northwest side of this city is just exploding, as you know, with rooftops and businesses everywhere, and the budget will reflect that. Again, did I mention we're adding 34 new team members to the city team? When I was first elected in 2010, I had challenged the teammates that I work with to do more with less. My goal was not to hire folks, any additional folks, until we had maximized the productivity, maximize the return of the team that we already have. To the citizens of Sioux Falls, we have. We have. We are taking the teammates that we have, and I think we're doing unbelievably good things with the work that we do every day for you. But again, the city's growing, and I know that, you know, you're always scrutinizing the taxpayer dollar. I know you're always wanting us to spend less, but what I'm going to tell you folks is that in order to keep up with the pace of growth that we have, in order to stay one step ahead of that growth, we're going to need more men and more women to help us on that journey. Council, that's why we're recommending that we add 34 new additional people to our team in our Health Department, our Parks and Rec Department, Community Development, Urban Management, the City Attorney's Office, Central Services, and yes, Public Works. Not only are we adding bodies to the team, but we're strengthening that infrastructure like we committed we would do. $32 million is in the budget for highways and streets. $36 million for utility infrastructure, and yes, we will keep Sioux Falls moving. We talked about affordable housing and how it is such a critical need. Multi-family projects, single-family projects, blight removal, rental assistance, case management are all part of the formula that is in the budget, council. But not only do we want to build new things, but we want to take care of what we have as well. You're going to see projects like tuck pointing projects at the central fire station, remodeling our law enforcement center, and yes, Sioux Falls, if you've not been to your city hall lately, come on by, because we're doing grand things there. Not only have we renovated our ground floor and still working on that now, but we're also going to continue to do good things on the second floor as well in the 2015 budget. Council, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I don't. But the transit system issues, they must be addressed now. We need to grow the fixed route services of this town. We need to stabilize the transit system financials that we already have. You know, we're recommending a 4% increase, but that's not going to do it on its own. We're going to have to invest in capital, and this bubble that we talked about, those buses that need to be replaced, it's coming soon. That monster bubble is in 2019, and sure, you know what we could do? Let's just save it for some other mayor. Let's just save it for some other council. Be easy, but it wouldn't be right. It's not what they elected us to do. They elected us to lead. They elected us to tackle these tough issues, no matter some of the barbs we're going to take along the way. We're going to have to do this on our own, Sioux Falls. The federal funding, it's gone. We're dwindling fast. No more delays, please. I came to you a year ago, and I encouraged us to have action then, but I understood what you were thinking, and it made good sense. It did. It did. Let's do some more due diligence. Let's talk to the public more. Let's get their buy-in. Let's work with other agencies to see what they would recommend as well. I commend you. I commend you. You did the right thing, but now we have to act. We do. These paratransit service demands, they are increasing faster than the revenues can sustain. I mean, right now, they're 48% of our budget. We're passionate about those folks. We're passionate about their desires and their needs. We're passionate about them at the highest level. But the model that exists today to serve not only them, but to serve the rest of the community, the model doesn't work. We have to have some modest fare increases. Listen to this, Sioux Falls. The last time that we increased fares with our public transportation system was 1996. It's easy, but it's not the right thing to do. We would recommend that we just don't rip off the Band-Aid in just one fell swoop. No. Council, we can do this. We can tackle this thing, and we can do it over time, and that's what we're recommending as a team. The total budget for 2015 will be the second-largest in this city's history. That's what we've proposed to you. The only time it was greater was in 2009, and at that time, we had $32 million set aside for flood control, $33 million for Lewis and Clark, and $27 million for the rail yard relocation project, all critically important. But if you take those out of the mix, this truly would be the largest budget in our city's history. Where does the money come from? Well, sales taxes, of course, are the biggest supplier. That first and second penny sales tax generates 46%, along with the property tax, 46% of the revenues that come in here. About $117 million come from sales taxes, and $55 million come from property taxes. So then, where does the money go? Well, we already talked about the 1,100-plus city employees and how valuable they are to the team. Well, they also cost the taxpayers the most as well. It's a great investment. It's about $117 million spent on the teammates that are there for you. Then the other operating expenses go, about $101 million goes for operating materials, supplies, fuel, utilities, maintenance, repairs, and all that stuff, and then another $93 million towards capital. Again, $406 million we're recommending that we spend in 2015. The operating budget is a sound one. We feel really good about it. Again, we think that it's frugal. We think that it's cautious. Now, let me tell you why. Look at our property tax revenues. They continue to grow at a good clip, and with the record construction numbers that we had last year and the almost-record construction numbers that we believe we're going to have this year, we believe that those revenues will continue to grow in a sustained way. Not only are sales tax revenues coming, I mean, property tax revenues coming in strong, but those sales tax revenues are coming in even stronger. In 2011, the growth rate was at about 3%. 2012, about 6%. 2013, almost 8%. Council, what we're recommending, again, to be frugal, to be cautious, in the budget for 2014 and 2015, we are recommending a 6% growth rate. Just kind of give you a little flavor for how we think that we're being cautious. Where are we going to spend that money? Again, public safety is where we're going to spend that money. About 38% of the budget is going towards public safety, and then, yes, something that this town loves, streets. 28% is going to go towards streets, and yes, those parks that are so near and dear to our hearts. The expenditures are in line with the revenues, and they always have been in this city. If you look at the numbers, the revenue that we projected for 2014 to come in is about $137 million with about $141 million in expenditures. For '15, council, we're recommending that we spend about 140, or we are projecting that we're going to receive about $145 million in revenue, and our expenditures will be about $149 million in revenue. So yes, we are recommending, again, that we utilize some of those reserves that we talked about earlier for the city to meet these needs. But again, our record is, year after year, as a council, as an administration, we always talk about using those reserves, but we've not had to do that over the last four years. Now, we are recommending that we maybe give it another shot, but again, with things going so strong, there's a good chance, Council Erickson, that we may not use those reserves one once, once again. One of the comments that was made in that CNN piece, and I was just so incredibly proud of it, was that in the city of Sioux Falls, we're able to do things at a local level, and yes, as a state level, that Washington is failing to do. With this budget, again, I think it just shows the people of Sioux Falls, the people of South Dakota, the people of America, just how we do it and why we are so successful. And not just successful last year and the year to come, why the city of Sioux Falls has been successful for generations. Let's keep it going, council. Let's keep it going, Sioux Falls. Thank you for the opportunity to engage you today and make it a great day. Thank you. Council, with your permission, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
There's been a motion by Council Jamison, seconded by Council Erickson, to adjourn this special meeting of the Sioux Falls City Council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, Sioux Falls. Thank you and make it a great day.